Good morning. The Committee of the Whole is called to order. Unfortunately, we don't have a quorum. I thank you, Vice Speaker Tina, for being here and Senator Luan for being here, but until we get a quorum, we will continue on recess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, please, to, you know, switch the two bills. Well, there's three bills total that we're going to be hearing this morning. And right now, the first bill that was up is Bill 264-37. However, Mr. Chair, due to the time constraints of the Guam Election Commission, we've been asked if we can move Bill 280-37 in front, in front of Bill 264-37. So the motion is to move...
Notwithstanding?
Notwithstanding? Yeah, thank you so much. You know, I really don't like that word, notwithstanding, but unfortunately, in circumstances like this, you know, it's no harm. So notwithstanding, I would like to place 264-37 as the second bill on the agenda and move Bill 280-37 as the first bill to address this morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Are there any objections to that motion? There being none, we move 264 or 280 to the top of the agenda, and we will have a very short recess so we can bring the panel in. Thank you.
We're back to the Committee of the Whole. Just so my colleagues know that we're going to, the rules of engagement is we're going to do one round, and then we'll do a second round. The third round will be left for any amendments that you should have. And at this time, I'd like to welcome Director Burns, who is on my right, also Maria and Tom from Guam Election Commission, who have already been signed in. So we're going to go ahead and get started with this first bill. Senator Joe Sinagusti, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 280 is an act introduced by myself, Senator Sinagusti, along with colleagues, Senator Canata, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munabarns, Senator Shelton, Senator Siniklas, Senator Parkinson, and Senator Fisher. All advocate for integrity and smooth operation of our democratic process. As we approach the 2024 Guam primary election, imperative that we equip the Guam Election Commission with the necessary resources to fulfill its duties effectively. In a letter dated April 15, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, BBMR, highlighted a critical issue concerning the funding for the upcoming primary election. While authorization was granted for $400,000 to support Guam Election Commission, no specific funding source was identified. Election Commission, no specific funding source was identified. Furthermore, existing legislation prohibits the expenditure of general fund revenues collected in excess of adopted levels without legislative appropriation. Recognizing the urgency of this matter is our duty as legislators to rectify this oversight and ensure that the Guam Election Commission receives the funding it requires to carry out its responsibility. This bill, before ours today, appropriates $400,000 from fiscal year 2024 general fund revenues collected in excess of adopted levels to the Guam Election Commission for the 2024 primary election. It is important to note that during the public hearing, Guam Election Commission requested to increase the amount from $400,000 to $415,000 to cover the costs associated with staffing and equipping additional voting precincts due to the increased voter registration and precinct realignment, ensuring compliance with the Election Code of Guam. By passing this bill, we demonstrate our commitment to upholding the democratic principles upon which our society is founded. We affirm our dedication to fair and transparent election, ensuring that every citizen's voice is heard and their vote is counted. I want to thank my co-sponsors for supporting this bill and let us stand together in support of democracy, ensuring that the 2024 primary election proceeds without hindrance. The bill is amended to reflect the $415,000. Sidhu Smasi, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Senator Sinagastin. At this time, the Guam election has waived their opening, so I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr., well, Mr., Mr. Chair. No, Senator Sinagastin, if you have any questions, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The question we posed to Director Burns from the Department of Administration, I'm well aware of the response from BBMR is that if all the bills introduced was identified and being attended today, sure, we wouldn't have enough money. But that's not the case. We're only entertaining the Guam Election Bill 280 to appropriate $415,000. My question is, do we have sufficient funds?
Good morning. Thank you, Senator. The CRER for May shows that we have net unobligated projected fiscal '24 general fund revenue in excess, and this is unobligated, in excess of the projections of $26 million. I think at a previous hearing, I suggested that May was not usually a good month. Well, this May has turned out to be an exceedingly good month. So based on those numbers, we do have $415,000 available to fund this bill.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair. I had no further questions.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. And also, I'd like to just say good morning to my colleagues at Manhattan, and those who are listening this morning in the legislative session. Next will be Senator Fisher. Do you have any questions? No questions. Senator Brown, do you have any, oh, I'm sorry, Senator Lohan, any questions? No questions? Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to inquire as to why this cost wasn't included in the annual budget for the Guam Election Commission. I mean, we're always, so far, we have not changed the requirement for a primary election. So why is there the additional cost at this time?
It was included in the primary election budget, I mean, in the fiscal year '24 budget, but our budget was cut.
Okay, so this will allow you to meet all your requirements that you need to conduct the election later this year?
Yes, Senator.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the information. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Brown. Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Manana Sidhuas, and thank you to the panel members being here this morning. The question that I had for, I guess, for anybody up there in the panels, following up on the author of the legislation, what will happen if you don't get this appropriation, or if we don't get the appropriation at, is there--
Then we, because of the defect in the legislation that didn't have a funding source, we will not be able to spend the funds.
Maybe the next question then is, is there any further funds needed for, not just this, but for the general election that we need to add into the budget bill if necessary? Marie?
Vice Speaker, the funding for the general election is in the budget request for fiscal year '25. So if the legislature gives us what we requested for, then there should be enough for the general election.
Okay. I really appreciate that. It's because I wanted to make sure that the intent of this legislation was to provide the funding source to conduct both the primary and the general. And I wanted to make sure that the, that the funds were readily available and just to help publicize the efforts of the Guam Election Commission being funded by this body. Can you go over the early voting and at-home voting services being offered for the primary, and also how and where residents can register to vote right now?
Let me start by saying that for the fiscal, for this fiscal year, and our supplemental requests, it does cover some of the preparation for the general election. For example, a good example would be the purchase of ballot stock. So we always buy the ballot stock and book for both the primary and general. So with that said, we want the, part of the preparation for the, for the primary includes preparation for the general. With regard to voter registration, voter registration is open until July 12, until July 12, with volunteer voter registrars and motor voter registration and online voter registration. You can go, anyone can go to our website at GEC.guam.gov to check if they're registered to vote. All they need is their name and their date of birth. If they have a current Guam ID or a current Guam driver's license, they can also register to vote online. We have a list of volunteer voter registrars. Our mayor's offices are all, are all staffed with voter registrars. They can go there as well. On our website, GEC.guam.gov, we have a list of volunteer voter registrars. Our people of Guam can avail themselves of that list and call any one of them to come in, for them to possibly go to their homes to register to vote. So on July 15, starting July 15 to July 28, Monday through Saturday, we will have early voting at the Weston, and early voting will be from 10 o'clock to 6 o'clock. For registration, for voter registration, volunteer voter registration, motor voter, and motor voter, volunteer voter registration will cease, will stop, on July 12. Starting July 12 to July 18, we will have district registration, where mayor's offices will be open until 8 o'clock to conduct voter registration at all 19 village mayor's offices and at the Guam Election Commission. So the last day to transfer for currently registered voters from one village to another for both general and primary is July 18. At early voting, from July 15 to July 18, if you're not registered to vote yet, you can go to the Weston and register to vote and vote from July 15 to July 18. Early voting at the Weston, 10 o'clock to 6 o'clock, Monday through Saturday, and on July 22, our Liberation Day holiday, which is a Monday, we will be open so that our folks can take advantage of the holiday to come down to the Weston to vote early, should they wish. Yes. Is there anything else? I think that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maria, and to the Guam Election Commission. And Madam Chair, I really thought that that was important. As we look at the funding source for there and what has already been prepared by the Election Commission, I truly appreciate that and the need for us to provide that funding immediately. So Marie and team, thank you very much for all that information. And hopefully, I know it's online again, one more time for the email or the address online, so that the people who are listening can, can know what it is so that they can go on.
Our, the Guam Election Commission website, GEC.guam.gov.
Okay. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, thank you for giving me the time.
You're very welcome, Vice Speaker Rose Munia Barnes. Thank you. Senator Frank Blas Jr., Minority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to the panel. Ms. Pangolín, I guess the question is, you know, today is the, the 8th of July, and assuming that you have already started to encumber, or you already started to spend money for the, for the primary, is it safe to assume that some of this money that you've already spent, or what this money will provide is basically a backfill for those expenditures?
Senator, since maybe three weeks ago, we've slowed down our expenditures, spoken with our vendors, so we're anxiously waiting for the appropriation to get loaded, should the senator, should this legislature agree. In the past, we've been, you know, working very diligently to be spend-thrift, but we will, we continue to do our work. You know, July 15 starts early voting. We have yet to send the contract to Weston, and we need to send that as soon as we can. Thank you.
Okay, so what is your drop dead date? How quickly do you need this money?
Sir, Weston has been very good to us, but we're supposed to take, we're supposed to take over this week so that we can open on July 15. So the drop dead date, I think, I'm a lady, but they believe in gentleman's agreement, but there's still a business, so maybe, maybe the end of the week or July 15, if we have to push it.
So July 15 is when you start your operations in the Weston. You haven't started it yet?
No.
So it's just a matter of, you've signed a contract now, it's just a matter of being able to pay?
Correct. And we need to go in and do dry runs. We were hoping to do that by the end of this week.
Okay. And the reason why I ask Ms. Pangolín is, I just don't want us to get into this habit of, you know, being able to start, to purchase things without any money. We want to make sure of that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Minority Leader, Senator Blas. Senator Duennas, you're recognized.
Sidhu Smasi, Madam Chair, and thank you to the panel for being here this morning. Mr. Burns, thank you for confirming the revenue availability. And of course, once again, to the Guam Election Commission, of course, led by the very capable Maria Pangolin. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for having the original appropriation on board. And I'm happy to, you know, vote in favor of that restoration, and so you can continue the good work you do and complete this election in an efficient and effective and fair manner. So with that, Madam Chair, that's all I have, and thanks once again. Sidhu Smasi.
Senator, I mean, Speaker Therese Trelahi, you are recognized.
Duennas Manana Sidhuas, thank you for being here. Want to find out, Mr. Burns, is there any other funding source that can be used besides the excess funds for this? There must have been a plan for this. It's a primary election. We can't, that's their main job.
Well, I take the point of the question, Madam Speaker, that everybody knew that there was a primary election. Like the Executive Director of the Election Commission said, the cause of the shortfall was a budget reduction, which at the time that the budget reduction was made, I assume was an attempt to match the then expected revenues with the then expected expenditures. So of course, it is up to the legislature to determine whether or not that this particular funding source is used. But on the face of it, because of the improvement in revenues, it would seem to be the most appropriate funding source.
Can ARP be used for this?
I don't believe so. I don't know that that question has ever been asked about an election. But I think that the federal government might well feel that they shouldn't be in the position of, of supporting an election that is supposed to be a local election.
Is, Director Pangolin, did you receive in FY '24 the amount that the governor requested for the Guam Election Commission?
I think, Speaker, I'm wondering, because we submit our budget directly to the legislature as required by law. I'm not aware of how much, I'm sorry, Mr. Burns, I'm not aware of how much the appropriation was, but I know it was less than what we requested. And even what the governor requested was less than what we requested.
Right. That's what I'm saying, too. And so what did we fund if we did not fund your primary job, which is a primary election?
Speaker, all I'm aware of is that the additional funding that was not appropriated was in the miscellaneous appropriation without a, without a source. So if that was successful, we would have gotten everything we needed, except that after the budget law was passed, the commission had to do a precinct realignment. We had, we went from 67 precincts to 72 precincts, of which we have to staff. Our, our law, our, our election code requires us not to go over, not to go substantially over 800 voters per precinct. Hence, we did a precinct realignment early in the year and increased our cost to, increased our cost for more precinct officials to about $15,000.
And you said that that precinct realignment is costing you about an additional $15,000?
That's correct. It's five precinct officials for the additional--
Okay. But the $400,000, that's what I'm talking about. So that one, I know there was language in the budget saying the governor can put money there somehow. Was there any source looked at, Mr. Burns?
Thank you. I think that the view of the administration was that this, this was the appropriate way to fund the apparent shortfall. So that was the way that it was agreed should move forward.
Director Pangolin, did you receive more in '24 than you did in '23 when there was not an election?
Every budget year, every year funds an election. So the, the even year funds primary election, and the odd year funds general election. So I believe the odd year is a little lower because we've already, in the even year, we've already did some of the preparation for the general election as well. And most of our overtime for personnel is in the even year, which is a big expenditure for GEC.
Well, they just brought it in for me. So FY '23, we appropriated 1.7 million for GEC. And in there, there is a 602,000 appropriated from the general fund reserve to the Guam Election Commission to fund the operations of 2022 primary. This is the FY '23 budget, 1.7 million. The FY '24 budget is 2.1 million. And that's why I'm asking, because FY '24 is only a primary election, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, and we gave maybe 300 or 400,000 more this, in this fiscal year?
So the, the even years are always a bigger ask. We ask for more money because most of the, quite a bit of the preparation-- We ask for more money, because most of the, or quite a bit of the appropriation for both primary and general happens in the even year, and that's why it's bigger. By the time we get to the odd year budget, which is October, we've already spent a bunch of things for the general in the even year budget, so you know.
So you're saying that even with the increase from FY '23 to FY '24, it was not enough for the primary election that was going to happen in FY '24?
That's correct.
Okay, and Mr. Byrne, I know you said that according to the CRER, we have 26 million unobligated, and in the fiscal note, BBMR had given us a list of bills proposing to use that unobligated funds. I think this fiscal note was outdated, or it's outdated now, because we spent the money on the power credits, energy credits, already. I'm not sure which, and the Veterans Affairs, did the veterans receive that $1 million? The Office of Veterans Affairs, did they receive that appropriation for $1 million from Bill 285?
It's a line agency, so if it was appropriated, it's available to them.
It's available to them?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, do you know then, of the bills that are pending, what the total is?
No, I don't.
All right, well, at the time, it was 55 million, so that was 34 over what, the 21 million in excess. So now we have 26 million in excess, less 15, yeah. I still think we're exceeding that in our potential appropriations. Just wanted to make sure. All right, and wait, I think I have one more question. I just, the reason I'm asking all these questions is because it's awkward to me, that we are like days ahead of the primary, and we are dealing with a bill to fund a primary. I feel like that leaves these primaries very subject to interference politically, right? Like, that should not happen. It should be done in a budget, and nobody touches the Guam Election Commission after that, and you guys do your job. So otherwise, we would be dictating the terms of the primary, so... I don't know, I'm trying to find out. OB's not here, so I can't ask him why this was not covered, but, all right. Sidoos Masri, and thank you again for all your work towards the upcoming primary.
Thank you, Speaker Trelahi. Senator Sinaglis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Sinaglis, can you pause just for one second? The chairman would like to say something real quick.
Madam Chair, in reference to, for OB to respond to that, if you notice on my opening, for information purposes, identified that while authorization was granted, unfortunately, that's a lesson learned on our side. We're not going to assume anything no more with downtown. Okay, so we're going to move on with this, and we're just going, that's why we introduced the bill to cover that base. Thank you.
Thank you for the point of information, Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinaglis, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want, more of a comment. I just want to thank the Election Commission for coming down here, and I just want to say that, you know, you guys have one of the most professionally-run agencies in GovGuam, and you guys protect our freedoms and allow that, to facilitate, you know, you allow the facilitation of that, and I support you wholeheartedly. I'm very thankful for all that you do, and I'm kind of excited to go to the Weston again. Your operations up there was wonderful. I think the, the public loves that, too, and I, I want to thank you for continuing that. That's really a wonderful thing. So, you know, if you, you have my support on this measure and anything else that you might need. Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're going for the second round. I'm just going to have to ask for our hands up. If anybody would like to have a second round, please raise your hand, so you could be recognized. Okay, nobody is being recognized on the second round, so we're, right. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and release the panel, and go into the second, the third round, taking a short break for any amendments that are being proffered. I believe there's just one amendment. So at this time, I'd like to thank the panel for being here this morning, and you may be excused, and create a great day. Real quickly, because I know there's quite a bit of people listening to the legislature and trying to get this information, so I'm going to have the director talk about a homebound election, and how that is being run right now. So, Pangolinan, you are recognized.
Dispenser Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes had asked about homebound services as well. So right now, we've started homebound services for those that are truly homebound. Simply call our office at 671-477-9791, and let them know that you are requesting homebound services. Our mayors are well aware of this service as well. So if homebound, if the caregivers or the homebound voter wants to call the mayors or more comfortable with calling the mayor, they guide us to the homes of these homebound voters. And if our homebound voters are not registered yet, please call us right away, so we can come out and register you to vote up until July 18th. After July 18th, if our homebound voter is not registered yet, the law requires us that we turn your service down, so please call us. We are also, we also visit the hospitals as well, and for anybody going out on medical referral, now's the time to call us, so we can, you can avail your, you can avail our services, especially if you're already at the hospital, both, all GMH, GRMC, Naval Hospital, and we also visit St. Dominique's if there's any requests for us to go out there and service our voters at St. Dominique's. Sidoos Masri.
Madam Director, you know, when people are watching, sometimes when you're ready to give them a phone number, they don't have a pen available. So I'm going to have you just repeat that number to those homebound one more time, for those who finally ran to got their pen and ready to write. Can you please put that number out there one more time?
Please call the Guam Election Commission at 671-477-9791. Sidoos Masri.
And Madam Director, is that number for homebound, or is it just the Election Commission? Is there a special number that you have?
That's a GEC number. All of our employees have been trained to take calls for the different services that we offer. Simply mention that you are looking for homebound services. Sidoos Masri.
Thank you, and Sidoos Masri, too. And I, at this time, I will release the panel, and we'll take a short recess.
Also to move it also to the third reading file.
Okay. First, is there any objection to the Bill 280-37? No objection to the measure? Okay, and then at this time, there's a bit of motion to move it to the third reading file. Is there any objection?
No objection.
Seeing no objection, move to the third reading file. We're going to take a short recess as we're ready to entertain the next bill. Thank you. Thank you.
Committee of the Whole has called back to order. My colleagues, we do have the panel up front, and they've all been sworn in. And with that, materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared session, Google Drive folder. Committee of the Whole, Bill 264-37, COR. Proposed amendment was transmitted writing to the clerk via email. We will have three rounds, but if we don't need the second round, I'll ask the question. If we don't need it, we can move directly to the amendments, and we can move on. All right? You'll have five minutes per round. Time to speak may not be used from more than one member to another. Remember, who used the members' time on the question, use all that member's time on that question. My colleagues? With that, the members have already been sworn in. I mentioned that earlier. Then I'd ask them to introduce themselves before I ask the author of the bill to speak on the bill. If I can get... We'll begin with Mr. Ed. If you can just introduce yourself, and then to your right, next.
Good morning. Edward Byrne, Director of Administration.
Hafede Melvin-Wan Pat Borha, Department of Somoto Affairs.
Good morning. Patrick Luhon, Guam State Historic Preservation Officer.
Hafede Luwlan-Turlahe, Office of Finance and Budget.
Thank you, panel. And with that, I'd ask the author of the Bill 264-37 to go ahead and give her opening statement, and be the first to ask questions. All right, ma'am?
Sejuus Mossi, Mr. Chair, and to the panel members, thank you so much for being here this morning. You know, more than 30 years ago, when Governor Carl Gutierrez and Congresswoman Madeline Bredali served in these halls, when the fathers of my good friends from GIGO and MTM were showing the example of public service, their sons would eventually follow. Mr. Chair, the Guam Legislature made a solemn promise that our ancestors, who were dug up from the sites of their eternal rest, we promised that we would restore the honor and the dignity they are due with what is now known as Naftan Manaynata. And back then, our predecessors expressed concern and dismay to what we should all find as an unacceptable treatment of human remains of our foremothers and forefathers. Some were returned after being taken thousands of miles away from their homeland. Their purpose reduced to the museum inventory. All of the ones remaining today are in a similar situation, awaiting action from our government in shoeboxes, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, in Naftan Manaynata, the Tramoral National Shrine, has been designated to serve the final resting place for thousands of these mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, and grandparents, and a place for the Tramoral people to reflect on our existence. An existence that is only possible because of the Manayna, who lived on this very island, who crossed an ocean with nothing but the stars to guide them, and settled the Marianas thousands and thousands and thousands of years ago. That original promise for this special memorial site, Mr. Chair, was made in 1992. I think that's 32 years ago. And it took the way... All the way until 2016 for this body to make meaningful progress on this commitment, when the legislature identified the site on the Tumuning Cliff Site for this shrine to be built, which happens to be located at the only documented site of our people's victory during the Spanish Tramoral Wars. I was very proud of Mr. Chair to support that bill, and was joined by a bipartisan group of Guamanians, including the minority leader, who helped enact this measure into law. Colleagues, Bill 264 represents a renewed effort to fulfill this decades-old promise to our ancestors, that those who have been disturbed by accident due to development or through archaeological research be given a final resting place that dignifies their lives. With this $5 million appropriation, the Department of Parks and Recreation, along with the State Historic Preservation Office, can begin and complete construction of the Naftan Manaynata Shrine, and can bring this chapter in our legislative history to a close. Our office has been advised that this amount should be sufficient to bring the design from Andrew LaGuagna, a prolific architect, to life. Mr. Chair, thanks to the discussion with the Young Men's League of Guam, which Mr. LaGuagna proudly served in, our shipo and others, I firmly believe we must take every opportunity to resolve this decades-old commitment, and our currently reported revenue surplus presents such an opportunity. Mr. Chair, I want to stress something critically important was born out of these discussions. The moral imperative that this fiscal cost is our responsibility to pay. We floated the idea of funding the construction of the shrine through the federal grants, and to his credit, our shipo, Mr. Patrick Luhon, who's here today, cautioned my office that we, as descendants of these men and women, should not shrink our duty to take care of them. We're talking about, Mr. Chair, 3,000 of our ancestors, not the blood of those who dole out money in Washington. It's our ancestors. This perspective led to a shift in my mindset on this issue, and it has convinced me that we, the people of Guam, must make this investment, that we, and not anybody else, have the duty to care for these remains. That is a job for us and not others to complete. I know that an essential part of discussions in the Committee of the Whole is to obtain the latest financial information from our government experts, and to address any concerns or questions we have with our stakeholder agencies and organizations. So I want to say, Mr. Chair, on this onset, that I'm open to refining the amount appropriated to better reflect what will be shared today, and I also remain committed to compromise with my colleagues should amending this bill convert their opposition to support. Because I think the best message to send, Mr. Chair, about how we feel about our ancestors, who are still waiting to rest eternal once more, is to send this Bill 264 to the governor's desk with our unanimous backing. With that, Mr. Chair, I thank you for the time to discuss this appropriation, and I humbly ask my colleagues for their support. I do have questions, Mr. Chair, and I know I still have time, so on the questions...
Yes, yes, Madam Vice. You're the first to ask a question in the first row.
This question is to DOA or BBMR. Are there any unfunded obligations or carryover appropriations the administration is planning on funding through any of the reported surplus revenue? Are there any unfunded obligations or carryover appropriations the administration is planning on funding through any of the reported surplus revenue?
Thank you for that question, Madam Vice Speaker. I think you're aware that in the Fiscal 24 Budget Act, there are many more carryover appropriations than were available in Fiscal 23. And it was a concern, because the cash has to be found to make those actual appropriations and to spend that money. We have had some discussion with the mayor's council, and there were some prior year appropriations, because they have a running carryforward appropriation in order that they could spend some of their funds that are currently underspent by the end of this year. It's hard at this moment to tell you exactly how much, because we're not the right way through the year, and we've got quite a lot of obligations that still have to be incurred and recognized. But off the top of my head, I would say somewhere between $5 and $7 million is the expected cash effect of the carryover obligations.
Okay, okay. Beside, Mr. Chair, for DOA or BBMR, besides what has been reported in the latest C R E R, are there other special fund subsidies you expect will be paid through surplus general fund revenue before the end of the year? And I say this in simpler terms. In May 31, the C R E R, it was noted that there is a projection of more than $9.5 million of a subsidy from the general fund to cover a shortfall in the Healthy Futures Funds. Are you projecting any greater subsidies than that being paid out before September 30?
The amount that's reported here, Madam Vice Speaker, is the amount that's currently the shortfall for the Healthy Futures Fund. If a further shortfall occurs in the following months, it will have to be taken account of, obviously, out of the general fund revenues. At the rate... If you look at the rate, that's kind of like $10 million for eight months, so it's likely to be another $3 million.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for the Department of Tramoral Affairs. How did DCA come into possession of these ancestral remains?
Thank you, Vice Speaker. As you mentioned in your opening statement, the remains... The majority of the remains are from the Horn Bosso collection that were returned by the Bishop Museum in the '90s. So that's been in the news lately, that we're... DCA or the Guam Museum has been working with DPR and Bishop Museum to have the remaining ancestral artifacts returned. But all of the human remains that were in their inventory were returned along with that same set in the '90s.
Okay. Can you give us a brief history of some of these individuals? Can you say how long ago some of them lived, or how long ago the earliest of them was unearthed, for instance? Just a guesstimate, so that the listening audience can understand.
There's actually... I just... This is actually my first time seeing this, but there was a... Under Governor Gutierrez, in December 12, 2000, there was submitted a... There was a report on the ancestral remains. There's actually a task force that was built to do an assessment of this. So most of the remains that we're addressing here are from that Horn Bosso collection. On December 18, 1990, Bill 1729 was introduced by the Guam Legislature by Senator Franklin Kitugue, and that was to, you know, have these remains returned. But most of these are from... Where is it? So the collection to be returned to Guam was comprised of 88 boxes of ancestral remains, 311 individuals, 303 adults, eight, what they refer to as subadults or children. Of the 311 individuals, only 18 are complete skeletons. These are... There was at one point an assessment of approximately 400 individuals, but this is what was actually returned to us. Yeah, we're not talking about grave... Did this include the grave objects? No, really? This did not include the grave objects. This is just the skeletal remains themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I still have several questions, but if anything, that should... If that information by Mr. Borra is settled, Wan Pat Borra, if you could at least append that to the journal, so we have it for keepsake, please? Thank you. And then the historic significance of the site has been brought up a few times while discussing this project. Can you share a little bit about why you feel its history lends to our mission to build a national shrine? Yes, to you.
Sejuus Mossi, Vice Speaker. Yeah, I think that the part of the history that I think a lot of people are unaware of in this situation is that these are... First of all, they're disturbed remains, right? These were uncovered primarily through the efforts of Hans Horn Bosso, and were shipped out to Hawaii using military transport. And so, you know, there's already kind of the, I guess, the initial offense, let's call it. But, you know, our government worked diligently to have these remains returned in 1990. And I think that that's... It's significant, because they... Since that time, they have not been given final rest. These remains were being held at one point in our rental unit that we were occupying at the DNA building, and when we lost that lease, Mr. Phil Flores donated office space to us in the Flores Building right across the Hagatia Library, and they've been in that space since. Now, we are using the Flores Building as a temporary repository. It's really an office building that we had to kind of retrofit to provide the appropriate temperature control. Our... The last assessment that was... Or the last kind of condition assessment done on the remains was that they're still in really good shape. So, you know, we're happy that they have not deteriorated in condition since being unearthed, but, you know, this is not the appropriate treatment for our ancestors. They are being cared for as, you know, as dignified a manner as possible, but this is just not how we... This is not how we respect our dead, you know? So the Naftan... The importance of the Naftan Manaynata Shrine, I think, is twofold, in the sense that, yes, we are seeking final resting place and dignified treatment of our ancestors, but the other part of the challenge is that it is almost impossible to identify the exact location of their origin in order to give them what, you know, would be the ideal reburial. Because in our law now, whenever, I think it's post-1990, any discovery of ancestral remains will be reinterred in the place that they were found or in a nearby site. So there are examples where, you know, the property is not accessible to the public for them to pay their respects. And so the Naftan, right, and there's... A Naftan is just a general word for, you know, monumental shrine, monument shrine. The Naftan will be placed at a neighboring property, like Malesu, there's a... I think it's a GPA substation. We had an example where there were human remains discovered, and they made an agreement with the mayor's office, because the Malesu Mayor's office manages the Santa Maria and Kamalan Park, and because, you know, the substations are fenced off, right? And so because the intent was to secure that site, they agreed that it would be more appropriate to reinter and build the Naftan in the Santa Maria and Kamalan Park to provide access to the committee. And so in that scenario, right, we're compliant with the law, and we're still, you know, giving dignified burial to... Reburial to the discovered remains. But in this case, with this particular collection, it's virtually impossible for us to figure out, you know, exactly where these remains came from and return them to their original site. And so the intent of the Naftan is to create as dignified of a, you know, reburial as possible, but these all are... This is going to be the exception. This is where... These are the remains that are not going to go specifically back into their origin site, because we can't identify it. And so, you know, there have been a lot of minds on this and a lot of attention on this in the last several years, so, you know, we're not attempting to reinvent the wheel. I think what we're really doing is trying to adjust to the current reality and the cost, the actual cost of this project, and trying to translate it into what it, you know, what it looks like in 2024 versus what it was back in the early 2000s or 1990s, right?
Okay. Madam Vice, you asked for a motion to append to the journal. I would like to hear that motion first. I apologize. I shook my head, but I forgot to make the motion. Are there any objections to the motion? The Vice Speaker asked that...
To append the...
To append basically what Mr. Wan Pat mentioned to the journal, so that we... So for matter of record, we would have it available to us. Are there any objections to that?
Well, no objection.
There being none? So order, continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. I appreciate that motion, but I also want to say in the interest of what you were just saying, Mr. Borra, Bank Pacific, as they're celebrating 50 years, and then some, and a resolution is being done right now, that efforts that they continue to host the... that efforts that they continue to host the, 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 the bones for those who have passed before us is something significant. So to Mr. Flores and the family of Bank Pacific and what they do for at least keeping it safe from further destruction. And I want to, I, I have to say, and I'm going to say this, for that. I do have a question, one last question for you, Melvin, and is your agency is not specifically mentioned in this bill? And I was going to say, are you okay with that? And what involvement will you have in this project, even if your role and statute is not spelled out? And I, I am asking you this question because of the significance Department of Tomorrow Affairs should be playing. And if we need to include an amendment for those efforts, I'm willing to work that. So I humbly ask you that inquiry, if you can answer.
To Mr. Massey, Vice Speaker, if I may be blunt, I think that I, I appreciate that you're, that you, you know, you want to ensure that D C A is connected to this project and this issue. If, but bluntly, I don't, it's impossible to separate D C A from this project. I personally, I think that it is appropriate that this is led by D P R, you know, of course, in partnership with our other government agencies. But there's no, we, we continue to have a, a healthy working relationship and an open communication with SHIPO, the, you know, management leadership of D P R as well as D L M. You know, D O A is always great to us. So we're, we have a lot of opportunity to collaborate and to provide input. Quite frankly, whatever funding is approved, then once this project gets moving, it cannot be completed without D C A. You know, we're in sole possession of the inventory. We always work closely with SHIPO. I mean, we, we're, we are tied by process or by procedure. So even, you know, let's say in other, for example, in other future discoveries, there's a construction project going, artifacts, historical artifacts are discovered. Once it goes through the SHIPO's office and they determine or, you know, validate that it's historically relevant, it gets migrated into their system, it will sooner or later end up in the possession of D C A and the Guam Museum. Because then that's our responsibility to provide storyline and historical information for public consumption. And so this project to reinterne the, the human remains, we will have, we will have to work very closely with SHIPO, even as the project is going, because there has, there's still an amount of inventory and curational work, curatorial work that needs to be done in order to finally reinterne. You know, the, the goal here is to never disturb these artifacts again. And so there's, even that conversation has been ongoing between us and SHIPO because the, the preservation standard for human remains is acid-free boxes, which is what they're in now. But if we're, you know, we don't want to be procuring additional acid-free boxes and interning them in a way that signifies that we will later on open that, you know, burial site up again and conduct some other further testing. Our stance, D C A's stance on this is that whatever, whatever study or research that should have been done should have been already done. And the only thing left that is, that's pending should just be to prepare them for their final rest. And so we, we will be tied to this project inextricably. There's really no way to separate D C A. I don't think it's a harm or a foul if we are not specifically named. It doesn't hurt, but it's not, it's not of a concern to me.
I truly appreciate that, Mr. Bora. Mr. Chair, I promise, almost done. This, these next questions will be for the SHIPO and Parks and Recs. Patrick, can you please detail the five million dollar budget for this project? What major components are contributing to this total? And some details about the non-construction related costs? We are also funding the inventorying of ancestral remains as an example.
Sure, good morning. First off, I'd like to say thank you, Vice Speaker. Your testimony was spot on. You couldn't have explained the, the project and the history any better than, than, than you did this morning. As far as, first off, I'd like to, you know, recognize the, the architect of this project, Mr. Andy Leguania, you know, rest his soul. It was his last project before he passed away. Working closely with them in two thousand and nineteen to, to finalize this only commemorates the importance of, of such project. You know, just kind of going through the, the final details of, of the Naftan Maniñata with, with Mr. Leguania was, was special. Knowing how long Guam has taken to get to this point, finally, you know, speaking on, on, on the behalf of the people of Guam to, to get the finances to construct this. As far as funding is concerned, Mr. Leguania initially estimated in the, in the vicinity of plus two million dollars. This didn't, this did not include the inventory. The inventory is a, is a very important portion of this project, and it's going to go in parallel with the construction, working again with D C A since they have the inventory. And, and that alone, the inventory is probably going to be in the range of over five hundred thousand dollars. That was a price quotation that I got from one of the osteologists about two or three years ago. Construction-wise, as we know, the price of construction has gone tremendously double, triple since COVID. So Mr. Leguania's estimation of two million dollars, you can automatically probably guess that it's going to double within, within the sense of, of what we're working with today as far as supplies and construction and labor. So what we had thought of five billion dollars as something, as a ceiling and something of, of a comfort zone, now might be a little bit of a, of a tight squeeze. But nevertheless, we're going to work diligently and, and try to make it as efficient as possible within the confines of the design and, and what we're here for. And whatever we don't spend, we'll go back into the coffers of, of the, of our people.
Thank you, Patrick, for that. And I know that this design has been on your website for some time now. But for the benefit of those who are watching us, can you describe some of the crucial design elements and preservation tools that are part of this project?
Sure, so the design can be seen on HistoricGuam.net. That is Mr. Leguania's design from about, you know, going on five years already. Basically, it's, it's right above, it's on the cliff line, right above the Guam Hilton. And I think it's a, it's a special, special place that I think people will be proud of, and it's, it's going to be a solemn area where when you drive up to it, you don't even see it because it's going to be on the face of the, of the cliff. And you're overlooking Tumon Bay, where most of these remains had come from, right? Dealing with the Hans Horn Bosso collection, all the collections that he did from, from Tumon Bay, majority of it came from, from Tumhom. So basically, it's, it, it curves out the, the cliffside with a walking area, walking trail down, where people will be able to, to pay respects, you know, to the three thousand-plus remains that we have still in inventory.
Okay, so how much will it cost to upkeep and maintain this site? And what kind of impact will it have on the personnel? Like park rangers, security areas, administration costs for, for those that will be, you know, maintenance costs for those that will need to be there? And then for the, the visitors to guide them and all that? So how much, how much will it cost to upkeep and maintain this site?
Yeah, I'll work with the director on that to get an, an exact cost on the, on the upkeep of it. But during the design, we did, we did think about the time of the visit. We did think about the purpose of a visit to the Naftan, that it's not created for a park or for a party, something that, so we, we, that's why we took away, you know, the, the public restrooms. Because the intent is probably not going to be more than a thirty-minute to an hour visitation to, to such a place. That, that was adjusted accordingly in the, in the project. And also thinking of all the landscaping and the green space, that was also taken into account with, with Mr. Leguania. So, you know, the park will be, you know, I'll work with the director as far as the time of visitation. I know they've, have a nice, robust park patrol program right now that will help with, with the safety of the area.
Thank you very much. And one last question, Mr. Chair. Are there workforce or educational training opportunities that will come about through this project? I'll give you an example, like inventorying of the remains or final transferring of these individuals to the shrine? Open to both of you.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the plan is to work with the University of Guam for, for the students to get involved, whether it's an internship or, or part of their anthropology, archaeology course at the university, to get them involved in, in this whole process. So definitely, you know, workforce development has also been thought of in this project.
If I, if I may, we, I, I just wanted to kind of endorse what Pat was talking about in the partnership with the University of Guam. I think this is a really important aspect of the project is that, you know, something that we both feel the burn of is just the, the, the demand does not match the, the supply of professional workers in this field, in archaeology. And so what we, one of the things that we're hopeful for with the, the building of the Guam Cultural Repository is an ongoing partnership with the University of Guam that helps them to, to benefit from the presence of that facility on their campus. You know, it's an asset to the university as much as it is an asset to the Guam Museum. And, you know, to our people that we're able to now maintain these artifacts at, you know, museum standard, preservation standard. And so the, the hope is that, you know, the, the University of Guam programs that deal with anthropology, archaeology, preservation will partner and collaborate to assist and, and carry out this task. But that we're also providing training and opportunity to develop skill sets here on island and maintain, you know, that, that professional capacity.
Thank you.
One more, one more thing, ma'am, is that we have already identified interested osteologists to spearhead the inventory. And there is already a cohort of students. There's actually an archaeological field school that's ongoing as we speak that will have that interested student interest to pursue with, with this inventory.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Chair, I know my time is up, but I did want to share with you personally that the, the reason for a lot of these inquiries or these questions was to make sure that the listening audience knew that this has been a project for so many legislatures since nineteen ninety-two, going back almost thirty years. I think it's important that we, we, we literally, we, we have the plan, we have the hard work from, from the late Mr. Leguania. And I want to thank him, the family, for, for continuing this project through with the Guam, Young Men's League of Guam and working closely with the government of Guam agencies. But more importantly, a commitment that we made in this body that this has to go through. Two hundred, two, two point three million, we're now at five. And if we don't build it, it will keep increasing. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me answer all those questions.
Thank, thank you, Madam Vice. Senator Teller, you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, I do. Good morning. Patrick, with regard to the repository, are there any other remains at the Bishop Museum in Hawaii that need to come back and to be placed in this burial site?
No, ma'am. As we know it, it's only artifacts that still remain at the Bishop Museum. So Melvin's team and I, we've been working with them. They're trying to finalize a, a final archaeological report, taking all the field reports that, that Hans Horn Bosso did in the nineteen twenties. And, you know, we're, we're hoping within the next twelve to twenty-four months that we can get those home. But no, there are no more remains at the Bishop Museum.
And the repository on Guam?
There, there are no human remains in the repository currently.
Okay, in twenty twenty-three, they said there was, so I guess it's been moved.
No, the, sorry, the, the plan, the plan was to transfer them temporarily to the repository. The, the repository does not permit permanent storage of human remains. But there, but we do have the opportunity to use it as kind of like a transitional site. So that's where we intend to do all of the inventory work. The osteology work will happen at the repository because it's a more appropriate facility for that. It has lab spaces that can be utilized. But they won't, it, it can't, they cannot, the intent is not for them to be there permanently. It'll just be kind of like a holding area until the Naftan is ready to receive them for final interment.
The design from the late Mr. Leguania was downsized because you didn't want people lingering around. It's basically just a shrine. Do you have those designs?
Yes, it's, it's on our website, HistoricGuam.net.
I've seen the one that you have on the website right now.
Yes.
And is that the one that's been downsized?
Yes, it is.
Okay, how many acres are you going to need for this design?
I'm not sure the exact acreage that would include the parking requirements. I'll guess just a couple of acres.
Just a couple of acres, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me about?
The, I'm sorry, Senator, the, the property, the, the acreage of the property was designated by law to be a maximum of five acres.
Right, no, no less than two.
Right, but it also included language in the law that asks for D L M to, Department of Land Management, to identify what the, the law refers to as an appropriate buffer zone.
Right, that's my next question.
Right, the, the law also said that the Naftan property must be contiguous to the Sagueno-Cuturo and Tomoro border. And it must also encompass what they call the rock, which is just this limestone formation up there on Oka Point. It's a, it's a historically relevant site or significant site in that it's supposed to be the site of one of the, one of the major Tomoro Spanish battles in the Spanish, Tomoro War. But if you, when you lay the, the map of the property in that location, you can't do both. So if you have the, if you are contiguous to the border of Sagueno-Cuturo and Tomoro, then the opposite side of the property line will cut through the rock. Now, if you encompass the rock and have it on the other side of it, right, then it takes it off the border, it's not contiguous. And so when D L M identified the buffer zone, they, they basically identified the area around the five-acre confinement. And so the total footprint of the Naftan would likely be, to include the buffer zone, will likely be more than five, it will be more than five acres, because the five-acre cap.
How much more? You're saying more?
I don't, I don't know exact, the exact number. But it's basically the, we have the map here. It, it basically takes the fault line and the, kind of the remaining sliver of the property that goes beyond the limestone formation.
Okay, so you're taking, you're taking something that would only be less than, or about two acres, right? And then this buffer is going to now require more acreage because of it. So is the buffer required? I mean, I know it's in the law.
It is in the law.
But by, how is it going to affect the property itself? If we didn't include the buffer, okay, just say it's not included, right?
If, if, if the buffer is not included.
Right.
Then it's, it, it's, it's basically, it's almost impossible to comply with the law in terms of.
No, let's say it's not in the law, the buffer is not in the law, okay? It's not there. It just has the, the area of like two acres to incorporate to the left side of the property. Okay, that's my question. Can it still be done?
Can it be, can it be done with an additional consideration and removing the buffer zone? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
I think it's, I mean, I'm, I'm not an expert on this field, but I, I, it might be possible. My understanding is that in our conversation with D L M, what they identified as a buffer zone is really, it's not a, that, that part of the property is not developable. It's the fault line. It's against the, it's the remaining property along the cliff line.
So the buffer zone that you're talking about is not developable? That's what you're saying?
That's my understanding, is that it's not, it's not a part of the property that you could, you know, lease and build something.
There is some, there is some of the buffer zone west of the actual site. It is developable, but it allows space between whatever would be intended for use to give enough spacing between that and the Naftan.
Okay, now you say it's developable. So first, we're saying it's not developable.
Sorry, no, I'm saying that the fault line.
Yeah, the, the fault line also is, there's undevelopable properties that are included in the buffer zone, which is on the cliffside and mostly seaside and cliffside that is included.
Right, it'd be very helpful, Mr. Chair, if we can get something on the screen to, can we take a short recess so we can get this on there and so everybody understands exactly where this is going to be?
Yes, and let's take a quick recess so we can try to get the.
Map on the. Map on the.
The maps on the screen.
Okay.
All right. Let's call back to order. Uh, my colleagues, I think if I'm correct, we have two maps, and I'll wait for a motion by Senator Tello to add those to the journal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to make a motion to add two maps. One map was presented to us from the, the panel that's here today, and another map is presented from the Department of Land Management's oversight hearing that they had on this particular area. So those are the two to append to the sessional journal.
Are there any objections to that motion? There being none, maps are now appended to the journal. Madam Senator Tello?
Yeah. We're just waiting for them to go ahead and put the maps on, okay, there. Okay, this map, my colleagues, is a map that was provided to us during the oversight of Department of Land Management, talking about the Naftan, Naftan Shrine. And if you notice here, um, there, plus there's a, another area, so if you look where the area is concerned, okay, can we pause my timer because I'm explaining the map? Can we pause it? Okay. I'm just explaining the map to my colleagues so they understand it. You'll see the area where it says five acres reserved for the point. Now the rock, um, is further down. Okay, so above is the five acres, and then the rock is like right on that, not the point area, but right where it gets like a hill, you look at the top right, and then it swerves down in dense, just a little bit, and then pushes out, and that's what, where the rock is, they're talking about the rock. Then the area in which the facility is to be built is just below that arrow where I said that's where the rock is, just below that area in that real like, it's a real narrow part of that green space, the narrow part. That's where the facility is located. And then right below it, where you see that indentation going out, that stuff, is where the parking lot is. And then you have this big box on the bottom where there's nothing, nothing there. It's just a open space because the houses then follow after the end of that green box. So you have quite a bit of property that has nothing there. So this is the, the map we received by the Department of Land Management during the oversight. So there's kind of, it's questionable why you have such a huge area that's not being utilized at all, but yet it's still blocked off. And I'm hoping that Pat, you can explain to us, you know, um, this, well, actually, I'll, I'll put your map on next, Mr. Chair. Let's go ahead and, and place the, the next map up, the map that was provided by the panel. And you can see the difference from the map that I presented from Department of Land Management on the oversight, and then now you're seeing this map. on the Oversight, and then now you're seeing this map, which has been provided, okay?
If the media folks can expand that.
Yeah.
Bring it in closer, zoom it in, because I can barely see it from here. Okay, your, your question, Senator Telo, would be to, for Pat to explain?
Yes, explain because now we're seeing another map today that goes all the way to the very end of the, the other side of the point of,
Oh.
Of Oka Point, which is further out, and it, it kind of makes you wonder why you're needing so much property when you downsized the design to make it smaller, and then we heard from Patrick that it's about two acres is only needed. Now you're, you have more acreage, you have, you know, and then I asked about the buffer, if it's developable, and according to Patrick, some of that buffer is developable. So why would you take, the buffer, if I'm not mistaken, is an area in which it separates between, um, other buildings. So if you look at the housing, which is on the bottom right, why do you need such a large buffer between the housing like I showed on the other map? Anyways, it's very difficult, is AV not able to zoom in so that we can see this? Because it is very difficult to look at. That's.
They, they say they can't zoom in any further.
Oh, wow, that's very, um, disappointing. Maybe we can have them actually make a copy for our colleagues so they can see what's going on here. But Patrick, can you please explain, I mean, I know it's difficult for some people to see this, but can you please explain how far out is now this map showing?
Yeah, so, um, what I can.
My colleagues before Patrick, it's on the drive, I was advised by the clerk, it's on our drive, so see if you can take a look at it on your computer while we're, while Patrick's also explaining it.
Give us a sec, Pat, while that my colleagues pull up the drive. Okay, Pat, go ahead.
Um, sure, thank you, Senator. Uh, the explanation that I have, based off of Public Law 33204 in 2016, has three components to that. One, it has to be, um, connected to the Sagan Katuran Tramoru. It has to include the rock, and it allows buffer zones. Obviously, the distance between the Sagan Katuran Tramoru and the rock is more than five acres. So in essence, the five acre concept of that public law, um, you know, it's, it's much more than that. In working with Department of Land Management, I believe, uh, the experts there, in particular, Mr. Joe Borhat, can explain more in detail of what you're, you're looking at as far as how, how it's, it was moved to the west. Um, and then for those who are looking at it a little bit, you see the yellow on the, on the top side of the map that you're looking at, those are unusable properties, uh, that belongs to the government, and those are all cliffside. And I believe Mr. Borhat included that just because of the inventory, um, that's, uh, connected to what is now the, the Naftan property.
Patrick, can you, uh, tell me then, this amount of property that is developable, how much acreage is that, that, that has been marked off?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that, ma'am. Um, I've been concentrating on the monument itself and, and the project, not necessarily, uh, the land parcels. So, um, I'm just thankful that the legislature put together a piece of property for, for this purpose. As far as the extension and the buffer zones, um, I would defer to Land Management to answer that.
Do, do you know what fifty-eight thousand, no, no, yeah, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three square meters equivalent to an acreage?
My guess is at forty-five acres.
Forty-five acres for a shrine, that's only going to be two acres. Why, why do you need forty-five acres if the shrine is only going to be two acres?
I don't have an answer for that, ma'am. I, again, Land Management would be the subject matter expert on that as far as allocating the, the property for this.
You said the shrine is, uh, going to be, and I'm pretty sure that the late, uh, Mr. Laguanya wanted to make sure that the shrine was in an area that had a prestige, you know, view. Uh, so those who are visiting can just feel the real, you know, importance of, of what we're trying to do here, and remember our ancestors. And so, the area is only utilizing just a small section that could be overlooking the bay, which is right near the housing area at the bottom right. I just don't understand why you need all those other acres to do this. And I know Department of Land Management is not here, Mr. Chair, which they should be, because we had an Oversight Hearing with Department of Land Management, particularly on this area, because they're the ones that are coming in and making all these changes to the design. And the question is, how can they make these changes to the design if by law it doesn't allow them to do that? So it just allows them five acres, no less than two acres, and now here they're taking forty-five eight, what, what did you say, uh, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine? I have to do my, uh, joke.
Senator Telo, I, I think Pat needs to look at the figure because the fifty-eight thousand square meters equates to only fourteen acres.
Oh, fourteen acres, sorry.
So.
I was going to say, that's huge. I was getting my calculator, you said that doesn't sound right. So now it's fourteen acres. Okay, fourteen, which is only going to take two acres to build this property and have what you have there. Now it's fourteen. That's still quite, I think that's twelve acres that is being blocked off, and I don't understand why it would be blocked off when the law clearly says, you know, five acres, no less than two. So, Mr. Chair, you know, I, I request, as the, you know, um, Vice Chair of Committee on the whole, to ask for Department of Land Management to come in here and answer some of these questions. So I know that we're going into lunch soon, so I'm hoping we can take a short recess and come back at two o'clock and, and bring the Department of Land Management in here to explain.
Yes. So at that, at this time, my colleagues and, and for the panel members, we'll take a recess until two, and then we'll get a hold of Land Management to show up so we can bring clarity to this and we can move on to this bill. Thank you. We are now at recess until 2:00 PM.